Understand, please. Let's pray. Father Lord, we thank you for blessing us to come out tonight as a governing body to conduct the business of this county. We thank you for your grace and mercy and your blessings. We ask, Lord, that you will bless the decisions and deliberations made tonight, that they will be a blessing for the citizens of this county. We thank you for the citizens. We thank you for the blessing upon our nation, our state, and our county. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will call our March 18th, 2013 County Commissioners Meeting to order. The first item on our agenda will be the approval of the agenda. There are no changes that I'm aware of.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like for us to engage in some discussion on our library plaque.
We can certainly do that in one of the agenda items under new business. And we can make that item nine. Okay. Virginia has been modified under section eight to reflect a discussion on the new library plaque. What is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion that the agenda be approved with said corrections or adjustments.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, thank you. All right, next item will be our delegations speaking. Do we have any citizens' comments? Madam Clerk. All right, the first on our citizens' comment is Ms. Carol Whit.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to thank Manager Mendenhall for hearing the residents' concerns regarding lack of humane animal care and animal ordinances need and change. For those of you that are unaware, the county has hundreds of dogs suffering at the ends of chains, our tethers, and inadequate housing. I stand before you to give them a voice and let their suffering be heard. For many of you sitting here tonight, you consider a dog just an animal. But for those of us that are fortunate enough to have compassion and share our lives with a companion animal, we know differently. We know that they love, they hurt, they feel sadness, happiness, accomplishment, and shame. Dogs are social creatures that desire to be with their families, not chained or pinned outside watching the world go by. These dogs suffer in silence. They live among the garbage their families throw out, in tiny little makeshift houses or none at all, in the extreme heat, cold, rain, mud, ice, and snow. They are forced to stand in their own waste on beaten-down dirt. Many aren't fed regularly. They can't run or play. They don't get medical treatment or even flea and heartworm preventative. They become prisoners in a small area, and many turn aggressive, protecting the only space they know, making them unsafe. For those of us that are responsible, caring animal guardians, we want this to stop. We are asking for the vague animal control ordinances to be exact, not open for individual interpretation, for the chaining to be banned, and the enforcement of humane treatment, and those guilty of cruelty or dogfighting to be charged to the fullest as a felony, not plea bargained or slapped on the wrist. We want our calls and concerns about animal welfare answered and returned by the animal control officer or sheriff. We can no longer accept generational ignorance as an excuse for inhumanity for animals in our county. The residents need to be equipped with humane knowledge skills to be successful animal guardians, beginning with humane education teaching in our three elementary schools. As a rescuer and part of the foster animal network, I meet folks from neighboring counties and Virginia, and they all say the same thing about Gates. We have the worst animal owners, and they will not, as I won't either, adopt to any families here unless I personally know them. For those of you that were not at the last meeting, an animal ordinance review committee is to be formed, and the county manager's office is taking applications, pending interviews for placement. Commissioner Owens is supposed to serve on the shelter advisory board, and they look forward to finally meeting you. The board serves to make positive changes and rules and policies for Tri-County Animal Shelter, which is a high-kill shelter that serves Gates. At this time, I am asking each of you commissioners to make heartfelt compassionate changes for humane treatment, whether you love or hate animals, and to make Gates be known as a humane animal county with caring, responsible people. These dogs will no longer suffer in silence. Tonight, you have heard their cries. Now, you must answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Okay, the next on our list is Ms. Amanda Smith.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to thank the county manager once again for hearing our concerns. I'm sitting here before you two tonight to speak on behalf of the hundreds of dogs that we have that are poorly and inhumanly treated here in Gates County. Having volunteered at Tri-County Shelter and living in Gates County and actively rescuing hundreds of dogs, I have unfortunately and continue to see the lack of animal welfare in this county. One does not have to volunteer, rescue, or even reside in this county to see the abuse that goes on. One can simply drive through and see the victims of cruelty and neglect, whether to rope, logging chains, or short wires. Many that you are sitting here before me tonight can look out your very own windows and see these helpless dogs. Dogs that were created to be domestic animals, an animal that thrives on pack mentality and human interaction, an amazing animal that would give its own life for its very owner. Yet, these dogs are confined to small areas, usually the outskirts of one's property, forced to sleep, defecate, and live its entire life in a dirty, lonely place, receiving little to no medical care or prevention. Along with this neglect, these dogs are not being sterilized, enforced to have multiple litters of puppies that will too be subject to living in this same environment. This is inhumane, careless, and cruel. Laws need to be made and enforced. Protect these helpless victims. Education needs provided to break the generational cycle, and most of the needs, and most of all their needs, to be consequences of great measure against the ones that commit cruelty, abuse, and dogfighting. I have turned in an application to be part of the new animal ordinance committee. As an ABC-certified dog trainer and behaviorist, I feel I would be beneficial to this committee. I look forward to Gates becoming a humane county that cares for the well-being of the creatures God created. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Cynthia Boone.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm back in reference to the community center. Last time I came and spoke, and I was really nervous when I was speaking, and I realized that I did not give each of you my statement that I spoke on, which also includes the conversations that I had with the staff members at the community center. So, tonight, I would like to, I wanted to bring these back so I can give you copies of the statements that took place that day, along with, you know, my suggestions as well. And then also, I'd just like to say that, you know, I see that there's nothing on the agenda pertaining to the community center, and I just feel that, I guess, that's because you have a completely investigated situation, and I look forward to hearing from you all about the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chuck Brothers.
Commissioners, county manager, residents of Gates County, I'm Chuck Brothers of 485 Drumhill Road. First, I'd like to commend all five of the commissioners in your efforts to bring Mr. John Mendenhall to Gates County. I'd like to stand before you today to let you know, whether you've heard this or not, that it is the most pleasurable atmosphere that I've witnessed in quite a few months or years in getting answers to questions in a timely fashion, whether it be phone, email, or in person, and I appreciate that from Mr. Mendenhall and his policies in regards to always an open door. And we had a very pleasurable conversation the other day. What I come before you today to discuss, and I don't know if any of you saw the Friday or Saturday edition of the Daily Advance, where the headline spoke of Lisbon City City Manager says that they are ready to pay back $1.7 million in clawbacks related to the Aviation Parkway Center. This concerns me in the fact that I know the clawback clock is ticking here in Gates County. And I, as well as other citizens, whether we talk on the phone or whether we see in public, we often go by the Commerce Center, and we're not seeing a lot of activity. But yet, that clock is continually ticking. I guess my question to the commissioners is, are we ready to make that kind of bold statement in print that we're ready to pay back $700,000 of one grant that came from the Rule Center? I don't know if there's any more or not, but it looks to me like that that is a very probable scenario. Associated with that is the fact that we've got a new face in our administration, elected and administratively. And I think that the commissioners owe it to themselves, and I think they owe it to the citizens of this county, to give us a state of the county of where we're at in a past and in a future tense, and also in a present, in regards to where we are situated in county exposure of finances and what we are exposed to in regards to liability. I know Mr. Mendenhall made this comment the other day when I was talking, that, and I think I reinforced it, I know his plate is running over. And I don't think he's got a lot of paper trail to help him in regards to factually finding information to get to that point. But I think each one of us as taxpaying citizens are owed the dignity to find out where we are in today's environment. I've got huge concerns that the players that were involved with that are no longer players, from our prior county manager to county commissioner and to the developer. Neither three are involved in this process. The only one that's involved is the taxpayers of Gates County. I think that it's time that, and I think maybe the commissioners have to a degree, but I'd like to see you empower the county manager to give a full and comprehensive report of where Gates County is in its endeavors regarding Merchants Commerce Center. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda will be Mr. Bert Banks from the Alamooral Commission.
I'm the executive director for the Alamooral Commission. Mr. Jordan serves on my board. Ms. Hoffler serves on the consortium, and I thank both of you for your service to the Alamooral Commission. I'd like to report that Mr. Jordan is actively involved in the operation of the Alamooral Commission, and I certainly appreciate that. I always respect Mr. Jordan's opinion. I don't always agree with Mr. Jordan, and I apologize for that on occasion, but I do appreciate your service.
A timely phone call.
It wasn't from the Lottery Commission, was it?
No.
Sorry about that. The annual report includes a directory. If you look on page 20, it's Gates County. And word on the street is that you're one of the best-looking group of commissioners in eastern North Carolina. I think that's what they said. It could have been something else, but... There's a status sheet of activity within Gates County that you'll see in the first, within the first cover. And I'm leaving that information with you. I'm not going to go through each of the items there, but we'll point out, these are our major programs. We have some other programs that we do here, but our major programs here in Gates County are, of course, the senior nutrition program. And last year, we served 80 clients and provided 5,895 meals to congregate recipients and home-delivered. We have 40 clients here, and we delivered 6,190 meals. We have four routes here for home-delivered: Gates, Sunbury, Corpike, and Yure. And we have 29 seniors who are receiving meals at home. Other items there, I'd like to point out, there are 81 volunteers who are delivering the meals, and they provide 1,313 hours of service. That is their time, and that is their gas, and we truly appreciate the generosity of your citizens. This program would not operate if they did not volunteer their time. And we're providing different services through our Home and Community Care Block Grant. We have 78 recipients for various services. And we do special projects here also: screen doors, handicap ramps, pest control, heater delivery and installation, and repair to toilets. You can see that there. Currently in Gates County, there are 13 adults receiving Workforce Investment Act services, seven dislocated workers, and three youth are currently in the program. We're also providing single-family rehab services. We provide transportation planning. There's not a lot of activity here in Gates County for the RPO, which is the transportation planning. We hope to have some activity here in the future. And that is my report. Do you have any questions that I could answer?
It was announced in my church Sunday that you were looking for an additional volunteer in the Corpike area.
We are.
Okay. I thought I'd sort of get that out there, in case somebody's here who might know somebody. That was the Corpike area, right?
Yeah. We're always taking volunteers, and we have currently people on waiting lists, but we can only run this program with volunteers, so we can only increase our service with an increase in our volunteer service.
Bert, one of the home-delivering meals is one of the great programs that Alamooral Commission provides for the group of counties that you serve and that we participate in. But would you just kind of give the board some insight on the economic development strategies that Alamooral Commission is embarking on or can undertake to help Gates County move forward in our economic development, either through grants or just whatever you have available now?
We are the Economic Development District for the EDA, which is the Economic Development Administration. We receive planning funds to, well, it's not for brick and mortar, but it is for planning. So, if you have an activity in Gates County that you need to begin planning for, that's a type of activity that we could fund. We also receive CDBG funds, Community Development Block Grant, and that can be actually used for construction, and there may be some CDB funding in the project that the gentleman over here was discussing. We have connections with the Rule Center. We can help with grant administration. We can also help with grant writing, if that is something that would benefit the program. When we talk about economic development, infrastructure is one of the big issues, and we can seek out funds for infrastructure through the Rule Center, through EDA, and through CDBG. A lot of our funding is based on job creation, that you can be allocated funds based on the number of jobs that you can create. We have a revolving loan fund, and we could loan money if you were declined, acceptance by a bank. We could loan you up to $10,000 for each job created. Of course, it's not a giveaway. It has to be something that we believe is sustainable, but we do have that funding available. Thanks, Mr. Jordan.
Yes, I appreciate that. It's always good to know what's available through Alamooral Commission, and this was a good time for you as a director to let us know that.
My card is on the report. If I've mentioned anything that piques your interest, or if you have any further questions, please call me.
Just a minute. On a volunteer basis, how many miles do these volunteers log, would you estimate? I mean, I know it's volunteers, but they do sacrifice quite a bit from that standpoint to see this work.
We used to compute that.
Okay.
But I would say 250 days a year, 10 miles. So, that's 2,500 times the number of recipients that you have here, which would be 41. So, I majored in accounting, but I'm thinking it's about 10,000.
You go back and do the calculation.
Okay, I'd say it's...
I'm trying to do them in my head.
About 10,000. And we provide, we do not provide gas. It is their vehicle.
Right.
And it's at their expense, and we do appreciate it.
Oh, yes. I know they're making quite a contribution.
Thanks, Mr. Jordan.
Well, thank you, Bert, for coming. We do appreciate that. I would inform the board that my term has ended on the Alamooral Commission. I served two terms, and they decided not to extend it for a third. So, one of you will have to take my place in the future.
Well, just for the record, I told Mr. Jordan at the last meeting, if I were allowed to have anybody on my board for perpetuity, I would select Mr. Jordan, but that is against our bylaws.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda will be Clearscapes, Mr. John Zellwinger.
Commissioners, Mr. County Manager, thanks for having us back. It's good to be in Gates County. Thank you very much with the good news that you have invited us back for Phase Two on the Historic Courthouse Project. With me tonight is our senior principal, Steve Schuster, and we're here to update you to where we are and give a little recap on Phase One and what we completed in the last two months, and then discuss a little bit about what our recommendations are for moving forward, and hopefully to answer your questions, and have more of a Q and A about moving forward, you know, in the near term. But briefly, I just wanted to kind of go back through the Phase One process to just refresh everybody. We did complete a Phase One assessment of the building in the month of February. You guys were actually reviewing the draft at the end of last year, and that was a document that had five major components. The first piece was the existing conditions assessment, which we embarked on in the late summer of 2012, in which we found the building to be in very good shape. Other than the known structural issues of the one west wing, the building is in good care and stable. Along with that assessment, we also had a structural assessment done, and the conclusions there drew that there were, the implemented structural remediations that are there in place today are, were the right choices. The questions of what continues to go on with the west wing of the structure could perhaps require a little bit more information about the soils. We are, we have the same opinion as previous assessors that the soil may have been undermined in the process of doing some waterproofing. And so, one of the recommendations as part of the Phase One report was to do some additional geotech surveying of the soils to see if there's any more ongoing settlement. If the settlement has ceased and the building is stable, I think in the near-to-midterm, we're in good shape, and no preliminary structural repairs are necessary, and we can, in the long term, look forward to doing that work with the rest of the building's improvements. The, once we established sort of the ground rules for the, of what the building was, the shape the building was in, we developed a set of drawings as a reference point. So, now we have a set of drawings that are measured and allow us to build on for the adaptations that we all are eager to enjoy. We studied some programming options. Three major programming options were developed, which demonstrated a range of opportunity, from mostly a cultural heritage tourism-based use to office and tenant income-producing space, as well as cost offsetting space, possibly in partnership with a local community college. And then the final piece of the puzzle, you could say, was to look into additional funding opportunities, including historic tax credits and grants. And last time we were here, we brought our consultant, Helen Ruth Almond, to speak a little bit more in-depth about her experience and how she might be able to help you in the future, and that we compiled a list of those primary funding sources that we think are a good first step in terms of seeking additional resources. So, we have a package now that is the furthest you've ever gone with looking at the courthouse and trying to determine how to take another step with it, and it's a good building block. It's a great foundation. So, wherever we go, in the short, in the near, in the long term, we have something that we can always refer to as a reference point. Now, Phase Two is what we're here to talk about, and Steve's Now, Phase Two is what we're here to talk about, and Steve's here to, to talk more in depth about that and answer some questions.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
When we gave you our original proposal, um, and you released this on Phase One, we projected two additional phases, and we're here tonight to speak about Phase Two. At the time, we thought that that would comprise four components. Uh, one was, based on the programming work we have recently completed, to really decide what the long-term use of the building would be. Obviously, you had a committee who worked with us through the first phase. The goal moving forward would be to work with that committee and anyone else that you feel could provide us that leadership to really examine which of those combinations might be the right one long-term. Because if you remember, um, Helen Ruth's presentation last time, looking for grant funding is always connected to use, and so we're at the point of really zoning in on what would be the appropriate, most likely a blending of uses for the building, so we can really start engaging, uh, other grant sources out there. So, in Phase Two, the goal would be to, um, build on the programming that we've done, working with the committee, and coming back to you with a final recommendation of what that use would be. Based on that use, take the diagrams that we did and really do a schematic design, um, come up with design solutions that would allow that use to be incorporated into the building, and take the preliminary cost estimates we did to a great level of detail, to know exactly what the renovation costs would be, both hard and soft costs. Cause again, funding sources, first thing they wanna hear is exactly what are those costs are, and have documentation that those costs are real. In our original Phase Two proposal, because of the unknown aspect of the structural stability, we had, uh, recommended that we would do some structural stabilization in the second phase. Given what we've learned in Phase One, we do not think that's necessary. Rather than doing a structural stability, uh, renovation today, it's always more cost-effective to do it all at the same time. So, we'd like to suggest that we amend that Phase Two recommendation and do just the subsurface soil investigation, and we brought with us a proposal from a geotechnical company to do that, and if we determine that the soils, uh, are stable, then postpone that structural design work until later. We don't need to spend those money today if we learn that we've got a stable situation. That would save those dollars and spend those later. And then the fourth piece is obviously, uh, seriously looking at funding sources, start to engage, uh, grant cycles, have in-depth conversations. We heard that the Alamoal Commission may be one of the sources we could look to. Obviously, they also have grant writing capabilities to help secure those, uh, funds. So, Phase Two are four things. Number one, finalize the use. Number two, design the building to meet that use with detailed cost estimates. Number three, as I've just mentioned, we think we modify, don't do structural repairs today. Do that as part of the major renovation, but do the geotechnical work that John mentioned, just to confirm that the building is stable structurally. And then fourth, begin the grant-seeking process and apply for the historic tax credits. So, we think that's the appropriate next step. I also wanna say, uh, because we've done this with many other public bodies, that while we have confidence that there is the ability to create a public-private partnership, to bring in tax credit investors to find grant funding, we also know it will take ongoing support by the local community. There, there will be, uh, tax dollars in this project, both for the renovation and for the long-term operations, and that's a real decision point that we know that you, as a, as a elected body, have to struggle with, to make sure that that investment is the appropriate long-term. We're not here tonight to tell you how much that is, but we're, we are here to remind you that these projects never happen with total outside funding, that there will be ongoing funding by the local community, and want to be, uh, very candid about that so that you make conscious decisions as we move forward. The last thing we wanna do is encourage you to take this next step without the understanding that there will be additional funding looked to by this commission long-term to stabilize and benefit from this historic courthouse. So, we're here to answer questions, um, and are excited about being invited back to take the next step with Phase Two. What questions can we address this evening?
I have some questions, specific questions about the foundation.
Yes.
Under the building, there, there are pillars.
Yes.
And those pillars are made of brick, block, or solid?
They're, they're basically, uh, foundations, yes, sir.
Okay, uh, and they haven't been, uh, they haven't been corrected or anything since the original building? I mean, is the original pillars under there?
Uh, they, they are there. They are, from a structural standpoint, the foundations are stable. What we don't know yet is the dirt under them.
Mm-hmm.
If it's stable. And so, given the analysis, uh, that our structural engineer made, and he, with John, spent a day crawling around on their bellies under your crawl space to examine those, the building structurally is fine, if the soil that holds it up is still fine. And so, that's why we're saying we should test the soil to confirm that last step.
And, and I'm with you on that. I understand that, um, but the, uh, because I have a question to follow the pillars.
Mm-hmm.
So, the pillars are the original pillars?
That's correct.
All right, so they haven't been replaced over the years?
He's been under the building. I've not.
Okay.
So, that's why I'm relying on his eyes.
Okay, John.
You have original building fabric there, yes, the foundations, footings, and pillars are all, uh, the original ones, as, as far as we can tell. Um, and, uh, what happened, we understand that, um, somewhere in the late eighties, early nineties, there was a waterproofing effort done, um, and in the process, when those, uh, when they opened that up, uh, the, the soil around the foundations, um, in order to put the waterproofing on the foundation walls, there probably was a rainstorm.
Mm-hmm.
And it was at this time that those, uh, that those open pits.
Caved.
Took on some moisture, took on water, and that might have actually undermined some of the integrity of the stable soil that had, had been there. We don't know this 100 percent. That's why we're thinking geotech is necessary to confirm whether the settlement has now terminated again, or, or whether there's some ongoing action, uh, by that, by the, 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 the bad soil, uh, and we need to take action ourselves to stop that.
And then the other question is, moving up from the pillars, the timbers that are sitting on those pillars, they're in pretty good shape?
Uh, they are, and, uh, the structural, um, uh, remediation that was done with the steel beams and the ties across in, on, on the second floor, those have all created, um, a, a, a very stable system that, that, it, it, today is intact. The additional things that occurred after those pieces of, of, of structure were put in place, we think are related to the foundation.
Okay, good.
Other questions?
You, you said you would, uh, you have, uh, modified the Phase Two contract to, uh, not do some of the structural stabilizing, stabilization that you.
In our original proposal from August, uh, of last, of last year.
Right.
In this phase, we had recommended that, uh, we do the actual structural design now, and that proposal, uh, for the structural engineer was $13,200. We're saying, tonight, we should put that aside. Instead, do the geotechnical work, which I actually brought proposals for you from our geotechnical engineering.
It's great, not for everybody, but.
It's $4,900, and then, once we do that, have our engineer review that to make sure that things are stable or make recommendations, and so, what we might suggest is the $13,200 is set as an allowance that covers this. If there's additional work the structural engineer needs to do, we document that and present that to you, but we think it will take less than the $13,200 once we know what the soil condition is.
I guess we need to, uh, consult with the, uh, Finance Director how we would do that, uh, but we would modify the, the costs and.
And only do what we need to do today. Yes, sir. I don't wanna spend money today. That just isn't necessary yet.
Yeah, and we certainly on board with you for, with that. So, um, we'll, we'll take a look at that.
Great, and we can modify our proposal any way that would facilitate that.
Okay.
Um, obviously, uh, the part I'm concerned about is our finance part of it, and, and looking at the historical credits and, and tax incentives that we have, and when we partnership with someone, whether it's an LLC, or we take a corporation that would do that. Uh, and you know, we, we've struggled with the use as much as anything.
Yes.
And of course, um, my real, uh, situation was that, is how we would maintain the historical tax credits if we basically, uh, changed the structural integrity inside with steel beams and, and hidden steel beams, where we could still, uh, be able to bring those tax dollars in, but make it a really, a truly functional building for certain sources. And I guess, uh, the thing that I'm struggling with is trying to, uh, and as I did when we were having our discussions, is trying to find that revenue stream that would make it, you know, cash flow positive, or, or at least cash flow breakeven, where we just lost a basically only, uh, depreciation aspect of the building, and there were very few that I could come up with. So, I guess, uh, what I'd like to see is what, what are some of the good buzzwords when you start writing these grants that you can use, that I'm gonna make it into this, and I'm gonna make it into that, that really, you know, I think we lost a great opportunity a couple of years ago, but with those buzzwords, but what do you feel like that are good buzzwords in that grant-writing thing that's gonna make this thing fly, where, you know, the people are gonna step up and, and would do that, say, hey, yeah, that's a great, uh, project?
I, I think that's an excellent question. Um, from our point of view, the courthouse really represents a lot of the cultural heritage of Gates County. It's one of your most important buildings. It's a significant structure in the middle of your county seat. Um, it may, in fact, be one of the most important buildings in your entire county, and so it does represent a lot of the history of, of this place, its heritage, uh, the uses that we'd want to exploit in it would be ones that celebrate the uniqueness of Gates County and find ways to share that building, uh, in the whole notion of heritage tourism, which would bring more people to the county, spend their dollars, spend their sales tax here, that would ultimately help with your county revenue. Um, we know that from a pure, uh, income production of that building, because we've done enough of these, they rarely, by their own income production, pay for themselves. But if, in fact, they do bring people in town, uh, to visit, to spend their money, the sales tax goes up, other, other revenue sources, the overall increased revenue can make them good, um, uh, investments for this community. Um, but it is a broader, uh, scope that we've got to look at, and it really, uh, boils down to celebrating the importance of that building, its history, and what it means for this county, and we have had success in other places with that message, telling that story of what's unique and important about this county and what that building represents for this county.
And I think that's, uh, you know, that is, the challenge here is to the taxpayers of being able to do that.
Yep.
That, uh, uh, it's a sales job, and because there's a diverse of opinions about, some people don't like history, some do, and, and it all comes down to economic standpoint, and that's what I'm actually, as a taxpayer, as a commissioner, uh, struggling with, because, uh, most time, when I'm looking at any kind of investment, I'm looking for a return.
Yep.
And I know there's no return, and so, uh, uh, I had to struggle with that, and don't, and obviously, I, I throw away a lot of my personal money, and I threw away some this weekend. Some people would consider that. I mean, you know, I, I think you're crazy with what you do, but, um, that's the, that's the thing that we're challenged with, is being able to make this, uh, a sales job, where we can get people that would feel, uh, good about contributing and seeing the success that we would have, and then something that was somewhat would be proud of once it is, is completed, and I think that could happen, but it is, it is a challenge to make a sales job.
I, I would.
And the tax, and the tax credits are extremely important.
They, they, they help a great deal. I would, um, politely disagree on one point that you made, and that is the return on investment. Um, now, yes, dollars spent, um, revenue received, that's a pretty obvious formula, and.
Right.
I'm not implying that that's not critical, but I would also advocate that the investment return might be evaluated in broader sense. Um, there is a, a strong part of the heritage of this place there, and the celebration of that and its long-term preservation, that I think has a return that's a little different than just simply the economic return.
And I, and I would agree too, because it's sorta like this, you know, if you're out traveling around in the country, and if it is a nice, presentable building, and somebody just happens to say, oh, that's the county that's got that building. I mean, little things like that, then, uh, that's, that's what you're talking about, the tangible aspect that you could have there. Um, you know, sorta like you travel around the state, oh, God, that's where the Secretary of State for 50-some years was in Gates County.
Yep.
You know, things like that, when people recognize that, and, and that's, that's the kinda sales job that you have to make.
It's telling the stories of this place in a compelling way that become memorable.
Right.
Those stories are, exist everywhere, but you've gotta tell them. You've gotta have a place to have people gather and to see the, the handwriting literally on the wall.
Right.
In your courthouse, and to understand that, uh, the importance of that building's had to this place for over a century.
Well, yes, I agree.
Other questions?
No questions, but I am on the old courthouse, Historic Courthouse Committee, and, of course, being a history teacher, I love history. I'm one of those people. Uh, but all counties have done that, and we are investigating how they went about changing their historic courthouses into places that the community was pride of and were an asset to those communities, and so, uh, and we're also investigating various sources, as we talked a little earlier this evening. There are its money's eye layer, but it's what, what you said, we have to sell our story.
Yeah.
We've got to make that letter, hook 'em with our uniqueness, and, you know, we have a lot of heritage here. We just do a very poor job of telling our heritage. If you look at Edington, you look at Muffusboro, they have done excellent jobs right in our region, but they are not the only ones, and this is monies that, you know, we don't have pollution with, we don't have damage to the environment. If we have tourism, we, it will be a win-win for the county, but I understand, we have to make it sensible in the dollars and cents too.
There, there is a, a Plan B, uh, and let me, I'm not advocating for that tonight, but I think one always has to look at the range of alternatives when you're looking at projects like this, and the Plan B, if we take this next step and demonstrate that the soil's good, or if it's not, we correct it, we do a little more design work, we have more definitive cost information, if we find that the time's not right, and a lot of these projects, it's about timing. Um, when the, the timing's right, when the economy allows it, when the citizens are behind it, if we find that the timing's not yet ready for this, then I think what we can do is develop a, a, uh, strong, uh, process for maintaining the building, uh, warehousing the building, uh, keeping it stable, uh, until the timing's right. And so, the building's not gonna go away if we make sure we understand all of its assets and where its challenges may still be, take corrections to those, and if the decision after this next phase is, let's wait a couple of years. The investment you've made to this point is not for naught. It's a launching pan for, for the next step. So, we think the timing's right. We, we can determine that in this next phase as we start speaking to funding sources, but if we learn that it may be premature, that, that doesn't mean that what we've done has no value. It just means we put it aside, we develop a checklist of how do we maintain and look after the building in the short term, uh, and then wait for a, a better, um, timeframe for that. I'm not suggesting that that's the answer, but I think we always have to look at alternatives if we find in this next phase that, for whatever reason, we can't find the support for the project today.
Sounds good.
All right. Any other comments? We thank you for coming tonight, and, uh, we look forward to partnering with you to go into Phase Two. Uh, we will certainly look at the contract documents and see what kinda modifications we need to make, and, and, uh, John, I'm sure we can just have that, uh, signed.
Yeah, we can do that, and.
Just consummate it.
Schedule all this, uh, time to be here.
Right. All right.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you for coming.
Always a pleasure to be here. Thank you. Always a pleasure to be here. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda would be the administrative reports. I believe we have our- Okay, all right. Public hearings. We have two public hearings scheduled. And we want to verify that those public hearings were announced and advertised as required by the general statute. Has that been done?
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding that that has not been done. There's been some concerns brought to my attention today. The general statutes do require that it be done. And it's my recommendation to you that we, as a staff, ensure that it's been done and certify that to you and bring it forward in the commensurate time period for the next meeting.
All right. County manager has confirmed that the required advertisement of a public hearing for rezoning of Mr. Graham Twine and Mr. David Spruill's properties need to be advertised as required. So we'll call for a motion to table these items until our April 6th. Or what is April? Yeah, whatever, April, our April meeting. April 3rd.
Mr. Chairman, in lieu of what our county manager shared with us, I'd like to make a motion that we properly advertise these public hearings and bring those to our agenda at earliest convenience.
Second motion.
All right, it's been motion second that the public hearings for rezoning be tabled to our next commissioners' meeting. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. All right. We apologize for any inconvenience that may have caused. Our next item would be our old business, which is none. And our new business, we have consideration to budget amendment number forty-one to reallocate the Elections Department budget.
Hello. Just have one budget amendment. We don't normally do these mid-month, but we need to get this one cleared up for the Elections Department. The director is looking to reallocate some funds to provide some training and travel money and to fix a shortfall in her poll workers line.
Number forty-one?
Number forty-one, true, right. And this is to cover what type of expenditures again?
Poll workers and some travel. I think part of it is money that was reallocated while the director was out in the fall. And now that we've gotten through the election and gotten some things, and she's back in the office, she's trying to get her budget back to where it needs to be for the remainder of the year.
Okay. All right. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We accept budget amendment forty-one as presented.
Second.
All right, so motion second, we accept budget amendment number forty-one. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda would be the consideration of a contract with Alamo River Regional Commission for Gates County to provide aggregate nutrition services. And I'm gonna turn that over to our county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Staff and myself, staff meaning the Finance Department, have reviewed this contract, and there are a couple of issues with it. And it's been brought to you tonight to think about the concept of this proposal. And I'm gonna enumerate the issues that the Finance Department has with this contract. And I'm also going to enumerate the summary recommendation for you tonight. The Finance Department has looked at it. There are several issues associated with the cost reimbursement and what I'm gonna call the overhead expenses of the FICA and the unemployment insurance, as well as the workers' compensation insurance. It's an ongoing liability. This is a new program for you all, as well as for the audience and the public. This is a contract for the Alamo River Commission Senior Nutrition Physician to be turned over to the county, and the county to provide that service and be reimbursed by the Alamo River Regional Commission. This contract came about through Mr. Bert Banks, who is the Executive Director of the Regional Commission. And it is our understanding that eight of the ten communities that he serves do so in this manner. We are one of the only two remaining. So I bring it forward to you tonight as a concept, as to whether or not the board is interested in pursuing this concept. And I will enumerate for you the three issues with this contract in summary. One, that it's off-budget, and the expenditures associated with the program should be part of a budget process. This is a new program. It's a new service that would be provided, that the county has not provided in the past. Two, the contract, as you read it, is not neutral. It's written that it puts the county at a disadvantage. It's my recommendation to you that the contract be rewritten in a manner that is neutral, and it puts the county in good footing with the Alamo River Regional Commission in partnership, not as adversaries. And then finally, the cost, the full position cost accounting of the current cost, as well as the overhead cost, puts us at a clear deficit so far as the expense to the revenue received and doesn't fully account for the overhead expense. So in summary, my recommendation is that this concept needs to be looked at by you all as a board. And if you would like to explore it, my recommendation is that management, meaning myself and the Finance Department, make the necessary preparations as part of a budget to go back through and properly budget money in FY fourteen and to come back with a contract that has us and the Alamo River Commission in partnership, not as adversaries, but with a neutral contract that works for both parties. And I bring that forward to you tonight.
All right.
Mr. Chairman. I'm prepared to make a motion now.
All right. Call for the motion.
Based on the county manager's recommendation and looking at the contract, of which I had not read, I would say that obviously, in any contract, you want it to be a win-win situation. And that's not what I'm actually hearing. And as well as appropriate money, so I would make a motion that the county manager have the chance to review this with the finance offer, and they make all corrections that they seem necessary, that it becomes a win-win.
It's a long motion.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
We have a motion to second that the county manager and finance director look into the contract and possibly renegotiate it to where it will be a neutral benefit for both parties. Any discussion?
Is this a position that was discussed in previous commissioners' meeting? Sandy, you, I heard John say it's a new, it's a new position. Is that what you were saying?
The position is currently a contract employee with the Alamo River Regional Commission.
So it'll be new to us.
The actual employee is not new to you. The contractor is not new to you. She's a former county employee that has retired.
I believe we have discussed this in a previous meeting last year. I'm ready to vote.
All right. I just want to say that, you know, Lulu, you're, is named in the contract, and they specify four hours a day. It seems like it applies to Lulu. And which she obviously does not have time to spend four hours a day in this program. But my understanding, as has been said, one of our retired employees is working in that position now for four hours. So it really needs to be clarified. There's a lot of liabilities that's been pointed out that the county could incur that we don't need to undertake. We give the Alamo River Commission, I don't know, twenty-eight, thirty thousand a year, whatever, as part of the multi-county consortium. So, you know, it's their obligation to do this, and it's more of a convenience of assisting them more so than the obligation for us to undertake this project. So I think we're doing the right thing to delay it until it's renegotiated. All right, we have a motion to second. If there's no other discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next. Thank you. John, you'll have something back for us next meeting?
Yes, sir.
All right, the next item on our agenda will be the consideration of dates to set for the Board of Equalization and Review.
Hello.
Hi, Goodie.
Hey, Renee.
It's that time of year again.
It's that time of year again. It rolls around kind of quickly. The statute states that you have to open the Board of V and R between the first Monday of April and the first Monday in May. And the dates that I had put before you were actually to open the Board of V and R on April the twenty-ninth, which is a Monday. And then to close it on May twentieth, prior to your commissioners' meeting that night at seven. And I don't know if you'd like to set any timeframes to meet in between those two or not. As of right now, we think, I think it's five or six that have inquired that we will send letters to letting them know that the date has been set and so forth. So we just need to set those dates tonight so we can get it advertised.
Okay. Now, we're gonna open April twenty-ninth?
April twenty-ninth, and I'll need to know a time that you'll want to open.
Four to six? How's that sound?
That's great.
Four to six o'clock.
How about the first, the training for the first night, do we need to do?
What we'll do is take about twenty or thirty minutes. That'll give us time for the oaths and kind of go over some things. And I'll have a copy of the handbook for you as well.
So what date is April twenty-ninth?
It's Monday.
April Monday.
Monday.
It's a Monday?
Mm-hmm. It's the last Monday in April.
But we really don't know how many days we actually need. That'll be based on how many people.
What we had done in the past is if we found that we needed an extra day, we would just post it prior to-
As in on the website?
And also, we'd post it in the hallway.
Could we do something like attended, like say, four to six, or all Thursdays or all Wednesdays, or something like that?
That's up to you.
I mean, far as just putting it out there, if it's necessary, then you wouldn't do that.
That'll be fine, if that's what you'd like to do.
Right. It was gonna open on the Monday, the twenty-ninth. How about that Wednesday, on May eighth? And Wednesday, May fifteenth? That would be one day a week.
Sounds good.
And what were the times for those?
Four to six.
Four to six?
The eighth and fifteenth?
And fifteenth. And we would close on the twentieth.
Close on the twentieth. Your regular meeting time is seven o'clock. Do you want to say six or six-thirty?
Six would be fine.
Okay, we'll get those dates advertised, and I will get reminders out to y'all.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda would be citizens' comments. Oh, yeah.
That's all right.
A new library plaque discussion.
Well, the way this came about, I guess, about a week and a half, I got an email from Mr. Earl Raintry. And it had a picture of our library plaque. Well, what concerned me, that was the first time I'd seen it, and it's already been completed. In observation of that, I found several things that did not sit very well with me. And some other people had voiced some opinion that had seen that too, that I had seen. And most notably, I guess, there was two issues. My number one thing was the citizens and taxpayers of Gates County and their contribution with this. Number two, when I observed this and looked at it, the people that were on there, there was two names that distinctly were missing from this plaque that should have been included on there. And that was former Commissioner Wade Askew and former Commissioner Carlton Dickens. So I did a little investigation and talked to some people. And then Earl actually went to the Pascal tank. And he took a picture and sent that one to me. And this is basically what they did. And this, when you have these kind of things, they're very sensitive, of course. But it says, "County Commissioners Serving During the Planning and the Construction." Well, to me, those two names were there when the planning was done. And they should be included on any plaque that's placed anywhere distinctly. I thought that was pretty much, how could this been prevented? A little bit better communication, again. That's why you do things like that when you drafts, you send drafts out to people so that different people can make comments or questions. You don't go do something without doing that. It's called, you know, consultation, negotiation. So here we are, we have a plaque that we spent money for that we had two significant names that were involved in this process, whether they voted yes or no. Personally, me, well, I didn't vote yes but one time. And that's how we borrowed the money, because it was a smart way. Every time else, I voted no. And the reason I voted no, because obviously, most of you might know that I didn't think the taxpayers had any say whatsoever. They even went so far as that they had a petition that had seven hundred names on it, people that did not agree with that process. Now, what does that tell you? Well, this is paid with taxpayers' money. It's their money. They deserve recognition as well as anyone. And I think that we need to correct this mistake. And it's also a learning experience, again. You have to communicate and negotiate in everything that you do. So here we are today. Another thing, and obviously, I don't like this, but it's protocol most of the time. You do have the architect's name on there, but I don't like advertising, free advertising for people. You know, that don't, that don't sit good with me either. You know, blame me, the cost is inside the project. So, you know, if he wants to pay for advertising, that's great, you know, but that is normal protocol. They do put that on there. But we, here we are, we need to have two names put on this plaque and get this thing corrected. It doesn't make sense. And for instance, neither Jack Owens nor myself were on here when this was started. And this hoffler also. When it's completed, Mr. Twine is no longer on the board. Mr. Mendenhall just got here. Mr. Chapel's gone. So, you know, we need to make some corrections. Because I significantly think that Wade Askew and Carlton Dickens' name deserves to be on here. They were county commissioners too. They served the county. This did start then. So I would like to see us get this corrected and make something that, you know, there's no need to do something if you know you've got something that's wrong. And as simple as that. But it's another example of non-communication, and we need to get it corrected.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, um, I'd like to just make a, a note that, um, the design and the order of the plaque was done prior to John Mendenhall's hiring. That's just a point I just wanna make.
Yeah, it, believe me, this won't John's fault, not at all. This happened in October, started happening in October. But I, I saw it about a week and a half ago, first time. After it was completed.
Well, I think that...
And I don't, I don't think that's the proper way of doing business.
Well, you know, I can, I can certainly appreciate the opinion of how it should've been done. I don't necessarily agree that an error occurred because there's no set procedure on how we do this. You know, we can do it, as I look at the plaque that we have for the courthouse, you only have the Commissioner's name up there. So, you know, I'm not sure we had, there was an error. Something we certainly would wanna consider in the future. But to spend sixteen hundred dollars for the plaque and now to look at spending possibly another sixteen hundred, I don't think that's a wise use of taxpayers' money. So, I, I personally would, uh, would not be in favor of, uh, not using the plaque because of some names that was left off. And, uh, I certainly wouldn't vote for that.
Mr. Chairman, I respectfully, I could not agree with that. I mean, as much money as we, uh, things that we do, we just spent seven thousand dollars back, uh, three months, four or five months ago. That really, I mean, I already knew the answers to that, most of those questions, and they were readily available. We, if we didn't have the eighty-nine thousand dollar positive that we got, that was previously, I would agree. And I think anyone out there would know that John Horr would not go throwing money away. Anybody that knows my personality would know that. But when I have an Earl and something's not correct, I need to get it fixed. And, uh, now, if it was a million dollars, might be different, but sixteen hundred and ninety dollars, um, you know, I think we can, well, let me take that back too. It really wasn't sixteen, and I did have a problem with this too, with the documents that John provided, that the architect got this and had to gave us some ten percent up charge. Wasn't that true, John? Did I not read that there was a ten percent up charge from the lady in Eden?
I believe so, yes, sir.
And y'all, anybody like that? I don't. I mean, why can't we go get the plaque from somebody? We don't have to have the contractor do that. So, now you take ten percent away from it, we're back to the fourteen hundred dollars. So, you know, uh, and I agree, there's a lot of ways to look at it, but the problem here, again, is non-communication. And simple as that.
Well, I think...
I'm charged with spending taxpayer money.
Right. But we, I think we as a board put together a committee. Jack, were you on that committee?
No.
All right, we put together, we voted on a committee to work with the library, uh, project, and we empowered them. And so, you know, this is kind of a hindsight, you know, that's always twenty-twenty.
That's true, but it can be corrected.
Right, but I, I'm gonna let in someone else speak. I've, I've said my opinion, but, uh, the other Commissioners...
Well, there again, I, I read this statement and this is the way it should've been, just like in Pasco Tank County. And if you go look at some of the others, a matter of fact, I didn't see any drafts, uh, from anywhere. And it says, "County Commissioners Serving During the Planning and Construction." Well, that always, that's what you do. You take in bridge problems to, now, obviously, this is a highly sensitive thing anyhow. It was from the very beginning, we all know that. My thing, you know, the people, the taxpayers that want, really ought to be recognized, it's their money. But I don't think that's fair. And I know it's not fair from that, um, standpoint, if, you know, like I said, I know how I voted. Linda wasn't even on the board, not every time. So, you know, that, that's, and John wasn't here. And that's great, you know, you wanna do that, but you wanna be politically correct. As simple as that. And this is one of those things that needs to be corrected.
Okay. I haven't seen the plaque this out there. So, I don't know exactly what's on it. I've been told some things that were on it. I don't want to spend the money, but I'm sort of like John, that, you know, if it can be corrected and corrected, I, I, I don't have a problem with that.
Commissioner Hoffler?
I was kind of surprised my name was on it. Since, I mean, I've came in at the tail end of the project. I mean, it will be dedicated when, while I was on the board. And I did not realize, I did not know the start date of when the planning took place.
I can't remember completely.
February of two thousand and ten, eight months before I took office. And eight months before Jack took office. The first vote was in October of two thousand and ten, which was the Clearscapes' first move. And Jack and I took office in December of two thousand and ten.
All right, um, we've had a discussion on it. Obviously, the only way to have action is to have a vote. And, uh, it does, if any action want to be taken, it would have to be taken in the form of a motion and, uh, and a vote on this issue.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion that we redo this plaque to include the, and I'd like for it to read just like it is in Pasco Tank. "County Commissioners Serving During the Planning and Construction." And I include the names of Wade Askew and Carlton Dickens. And we can keep all the other names and all that, you know, fine with me. Although I would like to see a big word, "taxpayers," but, you know, but especially the two Commissioners.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion?
Johnny used the word, um, draft. We, we need to see the draft.
Oh, I agree.
So, I would like to see the, the draft and, um, John, if you would wait to get a response from each one of the Commissioners for the draft approval. It's not, I'm not asking John to make this part of the motion, I just don't wanna, we need to see it so that we can all sign, pretty much sign off on it. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Well, the, the other thing is that we have, uh, a grand opening and an unveiling on Friday. And the part, that plaque is gonna be part of that. That's up there now, it's already mounted. And, uh, so the plaque that we have will be the plaque that's...
That's fine. I don't have a problem with that.
All right, any further discussion?
Uh, do you want me to make that part of the motion, Jack, would they?
Yes.
All right, I'll make the motion that we get this, um, plaque with these words, "County Commissioners Serving During the Planning and Construction." Add the names of Wade Askew and Carlton Dickens. And that the county manager sends us a draft for approval by the county Commissioners prior to ordering. And that we do it as the county and not through our architect, so that we can get this discounted price.
What is, what are we involving here? Do we need to leave the LS3P out?
Contractually, I don't think you're obligated to go to LS3P. This is much like the furniture and, um, computers that you could leave off that, that ten percent markup that they're giving you.
Yes.
We may be able to find out where they did the previous one. If not, we could go to Pasco Tank and, and find that out, I would think.
All right, we have a motion to second on the floor. All in favor? Raise your hand. All opposed? All right, uh, the next item on our agenda will be the comments of our citizens. Yes, Mr. Harold?
Commissioners, County Manager Mendenhall, Diane, and fellow citizens of Gates County. Wasn't planning on saying anything tonight, but, uh, what we just witnessed was democracy in progress. Wonderful. Difference of opinion, but that's okay. That's cool. I think our forefathers would be proud of what just transpired here. If I could build just a moment on what Chuck Brothers had earlier said about the Development Center and the, uh, players, uh, county, he mentioned specifically, I'm just repeating it, county manager and, uh, commissioner and, uh, developer, no longer a player. He mentioned that the taxpayers were really the only ones involved. And I'd like to add to that with Chuck's permission. It's, he goes right back to this story of breakfast. The chicken supplies the egg and he's involved, but the pig, the hog supplies the bacon and sausage and he's committed. The taxpayers are committed. And I graciously and respectively would just ask the Commissioners, our leaders, our elected leaders, going forward, we are where we are, but going forward, be sensitive to decisions that affect taxpayers. Just, you know, just would ask that. And I don't think that's too much to ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harold. All right, Commissioner comments? Commissioner Hoffler?
Okay, once again, thank y'all for coming and being here tonight. We always enjoy seeing you, uh, here. I do have a nice one I'd like to make, to read to the Commissioners. The Gates County High School Playmakers cordially invite you to attend the dedication of a temporary public art installation entitled, "A Thousand Paper Cranes, A Lifetime of Memories", Tuesday, March the nineteenth at, um, seven-thirty PM at the back of the courthouse. You can see the art, the done tonight as you walk out, it represents cancer victims or, it is cancer victimism. So, I would encourage us, if we can, to come tomorrow night to that. The students at the high school made that. Thank you.
All right, uh, Commissioner Jordan again?
I'd certainly like to thank everybody that came tonight, considering the weather's a little bit raw or rough out there tonight with the cold and dampness. I was gonna say something, I'm gonna slip my mind. And, and like I said, just thank you for coming.
All right, John?
I appreciate everyone being here and I apologize for cracking this, uh, cert here with this microphone, I didn't realize that thing. I don't know where you heard it or not, but it, it's embarrassing and I shouldn't do that. My wife would've killed me, but anyhow. Uh, do appreciate you being here and, again, I, you know, I, um, I'm gonna echo something that, uh, Mr. Brothers talked about and that's, and I've been carrying this banner quite a while too. And, uh, that I'm deeply concerned with some of our things that are happening and, you know, one point seven million dollars that they wrote about. And the unfortunate thing, this is happening all over the country, it isn't just there. There's a lot of things that are in trouble and we're in trouble. And it's a lot of due diligence that has to be done and, and I'm, we gotta make the best of it and just, hey, we, you dealt the cards you got right now and so we just gotta work on it hard. And there's some ideas and I don't wanna see us get hooked for seven hundred thousand dollars or anything like that. I do have a question. John, do you know if we could actually borrow money to pay clawbacks back if that, I know it's not a capital, do you, you have any idea?
I do not often, no, sir.
I, I would think not, but I wasn't sure 'cause I had another idea, I thought that could, uh, that we could do something, but, uh, that is concerning and, uh, I think that with the economic times that we got and everything that, um, we're working hard to try to minimize the impact to the taxpayers and, uh, I'm always cognizant of that, that is my most, my topmost priority is get the best return for your dollar that I can. And, uh, we in this all together. And, uh, I can pledge to you and I think most of you that know me will know that's true, that, uh, that my whole career's been focused on that one thing. And, um, some of the cards I got in my hand are not too good right now, but I'm gonna make the best of them. And I need your help, I need your feedback, and when you have ideas, I wanna hear. Thank you for coming again. Good night.
And just a brief comment on the, uh, on the clawbacks. Our situation is nowhere near dire. Like stated in Elizabeth City, in, in May of two thousand and fourteen, um, the assisted living facility is supposed to be coming to that Commerce Park. And, uh, that is to be fifty jobs. And that's what the clawbacks are about, are about jobs. So, uh, let's see, two weeks ago, we had a, um, another business from outside the county to come and, um, view some property out there with the intent of seeing if it's a, a place they'd like to build. And, uh, that, uh, that business would bring another twelve jobs. That, that one's not finalized, but, but our situation is not, uh, to the point where we need to even be, certainly not reporting that we're prepared to, to pay clawbacks. And I'm optimistic about that. It's, it's not our project, it's a, a private developer's project. And certainly, he wants it to develop so that, uh, he'll make money. And any job that comes out there, doesn't have to be a job that we created, it just needs to be a job that's in that, in that facility that's connected to the sewer. So, just to, to help you understand a little bit, a job, a business connected to the sewer that creates a job goes toward the clawbacks. So, and we have time for that to take place. Just, uh, about three weeks ago, um, at our budget workshop, we suggested, um, I suggested to our county manager that we write a letter, um, to the powers-to-be, uh, dealing with the grants and the clawbacks and, and, and just have a revisit that, that idea. Here's where we are and just tell us what their, uh, their temperature and their temperament was about where they thought we were on the clawbacks. So, it's not something that we're ignoring, it's something that, like I said, about at our budget workshop, I actually said, hey, let's, let's write a letter and see where they say we are and, uh, and go from there. But it is good, uh, to see you here, it is good to hear comments, uh, about this is democracy, so I really appreciate that. And, um, just like Mr. Banks said, he didn't always agree with you, Henry.
That's right.
And that's, that's what it's all about. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Jack, thank you, Commissioners. And I wanna thank all the citizens for coming and giving your input. We do value your input and, uh, that's the way things change. So... and giving you input. We do value your input, and, uh, that's the way things change. So, you know, don't ever think that we're not listening. We are. As always, there's always two sides to everything, and certainly, we wanna make sure that all sides are considered. So, I wish all of you a good evening, and hopefully, we'll see you at the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I remembered what I lost one of y'all. On Friday, this, this coming Friday, the library will be open. They will be having a, uh, dedication at two o'clock, and then it will be an open house, I think, all the way till six. Uh, so anybody that, that would like to come, certainly come out and see your new library. Thank you.
All right. If there's no further comments, then we'll have a motion to go into closed session.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Thank you. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, we're out of closed session. Um, we had a discussion in closed session. Is there a motion, uh, to authorize what we discussed?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the chairman and the county manager to negotiate with the said party mentioned in closed session.
All right.
I second that motion.
All right, in second, motion in second, uh, that authorization be given to the chairman and county manager to move forward. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right. We thank you. Um, if there's another discussion, we'll obtain a motion to adjourn until our April meeting.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right. Thank you much.